Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to our the school committee meeting of June 17th, 2019. It is six o'clock. The meeting is now called to order. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Is anyone else audio or videotaped in this meeting? Seeing and hearing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Roll call to my right, please.
Ms. Salati, reporting, secretary. Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Elizabeth Marcia Boucher.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Rich Ficero.
Sarah Trilio.
Bill Fonseca.
And before we start the meeting, we'd like to do a recognition. It's my honor to recognize Mr. Elizabeth Marcia Boucher, who's been with us for nine years, beginning in the year 2010 and concluding the year 2019. And I would say, Beth, that you were the ultimate school committee member for two reasons. First, your dedication and commitment is exemplified by the many roles you fulfill. I'm gonna have to read them, because there's actually nine.
Really?
You were on the Warm Review Committee, you were the MASC delegate, you were the ELEAF liaison, you were on the LPVEC Board of Directors Corporation, Woolley Ross School Liaison, Safe Schools and the ASAP Plan Subcommittee, Strategic Planning Subcommittee, Policy Revision Subcommittee, the 125th East Long Meadow birthday Celebration Committee. Those are the nine things you did. And through all that, in 2017, you're honored by our organization, the MASC, as one of the key school committee members in the state. So that's reason number one. Let's go to reason number two now. You did all this. I had to look this word up in the dictionary, what I would call duende. Now, duende means the quality of being passionate and inspiring. And, boy, were you passionate, aspiring. And I want to add one little word, a little feisty at times, too.
When the camera goes off, I love the feisty.
But you know, Beth, the qualities that I like the most, that duende, because you will always focus on the student. And that is your legacy, that you wanted to make sure that every student in the East Long Meadow Public School System had the maximum opportunity for success. So, Beth, for nine years, thank you very much. We'd like to honor this with you. And it says, "Recognition Award Presented to Elizabeth Marcia Boucher, Dedication in Service, the East Long Meadow School Committee, 2010 to 2019."
Wow. It's been a trip. I gotta say, it was not knowing what I was, didn't expect, had no idea what I got myself into. Good luck. And it's been quite the ride, because we kind of started.
Two years.
And I remember, I think, the whole school system needed to heal at that time. And so, I know, I had no idea what I was doing. I don't know if you knew what you got yourself into, but I think that the board kind of solidified itself and got healthy and, because they have good people that were on it, that just wanted what was best, and I'm happy to carry that, that thread. I am. You gave me breakable. Thank you, everyone.
To our business, approval of minutes, 2.1. Approved the June 3rd, 2019 Executive Session Meeting Minutes. So have a motion, please.
Move to approve the June 3rd, 2019 Executive Session Meeting.
Have a motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? The others in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And do I abstain for that? Because I abstained within it, or no?
You were part, you were there for part of it.
You were there for, you were there for part of it.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. So, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? None. Thank you. We're going to now our next regular session meeting minutes, our approval for June 3rd, 2019. Do I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the June 3rd, 2019 Regular Session Meeting Minutes.
Have a motion. I have a second, please.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Against? We're unanimous, Ms. Salati. Moving now to item number three on our agenda, Committee and Subcommittee Communications. Bill, take us off.
Okay, a couple of things I attended at Birchland. First was the Passion Projects, where the eighth grade students presented to, you know, a group of people sitting there reviewing them. And that was a phenomenal program. You guys did a great job. First year, I mean, it was, it was phenomenal, and I can only see it growing, just like the senior projects here at the high school have grown over the course of years, the years. I also attended the Film Festival that Connor Martin was the brainstorm behind. Connor Martin and Mike Nagliari, they did a phenomenal job. What a night that was, with the students producing videos that were shown in a film festival format, where they were voted on, and every student received an award. It was a phenomenal night. Couple of great things that happened at Birchland recently.
Just like the Oscars.
Yeah, just like the Oscars. Yeah, red carpet and everything. Due to lack of attendance, I have postponed the MASC Division Five meeting that I had scheduled for Wednesday night. I only had three people sign up, so I postponed that until the fall, and we'll deal with something then, and I'll let everybody know.
Ms. Julio.
I was able to visit the Mountain View Family Orientation meeting, and was pleased to meet so many of the wonderful faculty members, including the principal. So that was well-attended, and families left with a good deal of information regarding their child's placement for the next academic year. And then I was also in attendance at the Meadowbrook Family Picnic, and that was also extremely well-attended. There was quite a number of students and their families. And they changed a few things this year. There was a couple food trucks, and everyone really enjoyed the night. It was a beautiful, beautiful weather that night as well.
For the last time, Ms. Marcia Boucher.
I know. I got to do the Passion Project, which I thought was pretty impressive. I said some, some of the kids were, they'll certainly be ready for their high school senior project.
They will.
Without a doubt. These kids just really knew what they were doing. And we just finished up with Birchland, and I could get verklempt over the experience my child had in that school. She came out of the semi crying, and I'm, "Why are you crying?" And she's like, "It's such a great school, and just, we've had such a wonderful experience." And I had a car filled with girls that had this wonderful experience in middle school. I was like, "Really?" So anyways, I appreciate a wonderful end to that. I appreciate the intercom had to go on after school was dismissed in 10 minutes, but the kids weren't leaving the school. And I laughed so hard, I couldn't believe it. So anyways, that was a great experience, and I've enjoyed my kids all the years they've been in school. So anyways, that was that.
Thank you. And I would just second what Bill said about the Passion Project, what Beth said, that they were very enjoyable. We did attend staff ignition. That was very nicely done again. Kudos to all. And our baseball team plays tomorrow night. State semi-final. That's fantastic.
Good game on Saturday.
Yeah, it's gonna be great. Okay, item number four, Opportunities for Visitors to address the committee, to any visitor who wants to address the committee. Seeing and hearing none, let's go to number four. Superintendent's Report 5.1.1, District-Wide Smart Goals, End of the Year Presentation. Mrs. Smith, take us away.
Okay, well, we have members of our leadership team. I'll let them get situated up at the front table here. And we'll walk you through in a moment, a look at what's going on in the East Long Meadow Public Schools over this past year, and how it's connected to the district, three smart goals, and then the schools' goals that are attached to those district goals.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll actually make it easier for you. Okay, everybody set? Everybody situated? Very nice. So just quick review, what smart goals are, which I believe is our next slide. You know, these are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely goals. You're looking to make sure that not only are you challenging the district and students, but you also want to make sure that it's something that is connected to where you want to go and where students want to go in terms of their achievement and growth. And we never want to lose sight of the fact that as we set goals, we want to make sure that we're supporting all students. I think you know our mission, but just quickly said, we're looking to make sure that we build skills in our students today so that they can meet the challenges of tomorrow. And that we feel, in our district theory of action, that if we are creating an environment that fosters not only respect, collaboration, and support, and we also share leadership through a collaborative approach, that we will build students and allow them to develop 21st century skills as they move through our grades, pre-K through 12. So that brings us to our first goal. And this was a little change, if you remember, when we were presenting these back in the fall. We've gone to a circle. Some have referred to it as a sexy circle, but that's not the official title.
Sexy circle.
So we'll just go on. Mr. Ficero? But the idea is that all three goals, there's no single goal that's more important than the other, but they are all interconnected. And so, this goal is dealing and looking at specifically that what we do in the East Long Meadow Public Schools has to have a focus on the whole child. And that means academics, social-emotional education, and cultural responsiveness. And then, as we start to look at the key action steps, what does that mean? So all year, you heard this, starting in the fall, but then you also heard it at the mid-cycle. We kept our focus on, especially our events where families were coming into our schools, that these are events that can not only be engaging and fun, but also start to show off how we're changing some of our instructional approaches and how we're setting up learning in our classrooms throughout the school year. So throughout the year, not only was the leadership team discussing the five core competencies, but also taking opportunities, both informal and formal, to make sure that our teachers are really starting to understand what self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, and relationship, building relationship skills, as well as developing responsible decision-making skills, how those competencies might fit into a given content area or the curriculum in a given grade level. We have two, we mentioned this at the mid-cycle, but it's worth mentioning again, excuse me, two very good keynote speakers. Trevor Reagan, who came in, did a lot for us on the growth mindset and building culture. And then we had George Kurros come in in March. At the time when we presented at the mid-cycle, George Kurros had not come in at that point. We just announced him. And he was the author of Innovator's Mindset, and both engaged our entire faculty, and probably even more importantly, were willing to stay the day and conduct smaller workshops, which is really cool. And I think there's a Twitter back and forth from a couple of the leadership team members that continues on to this day. When I learn more about how to manage Twitter, maybe I can have that same dialogue back and forth. From there, I'm gonna let Mrs. Brown pick up. We did some professional development that I think really was impactful.
The teacher sessions were really well-received, and one of the things that we did a little differently this year is we had a full-day PD offered, both before the fall PD and before the spring PD, for the teachers who were going to give a workshop to attend and learn really about effective design for adult learning. So it was not so much, you know, just sage on the stage talking about things, but really getting folks in, hands-on, and bringing that back to their classroom. And some people really commented on the way that the PD was delivered also just lent itself to good practices for their classrooms as well.
All right. One of the things that you heard about, not only in my individual goals, but also in the district goals, was we were always looking to strengthen, either develop new partnerships or strengthen partnerships that had been productive for us in the past. And one of the partnerships that we continue to look at and strengthen, and we think that is mutually beneficial for both parties, has been our partnership with Bay Path University, and specifically the graduate programs that sit right in East Long Meadow. And so, we've been able to do some things this year, which Dr. Wells, I think, can expand on a little bit for us, but in bringing in their graduate students as interns and touching on a number of different programs and in quite a few buildings. I don't know if Wells if you want to expand on that piece.
Sure. So their program, their facility down on Denzil Road, obviously houses students predominantly in the human services, education, psychology, occupational therapy, nursing, public health management, things like that. And so, you know, we've really, we've really done our best, Superintendent and I, to kind of foster that relationship and make sure that not only are, you know, we benefiting from what they have to offer us, but that they're benefiting from what we have to offer them. So, as one example, some of the PD that Heather just discussed, we invited students and faculty from Bay Path to come and hear the speakers, you know, as part of their own course preparation. We've had interns in education and psychology who have worked in our buildings this year. Here at the high school, some of the psych interns worked in the wellness program, they worked in the guidance program, there were classroom interns at Birchland Park and at some of the other schools as well. Most recently, two of our hires have both been students from Bay Path, which is, which is really a nice thing, too. It's nice to kind of be able to know, you know, what sorts of folks we're bringing into work in this district, and they're very, very eager to do that. And then also, we've had the opportunity this year, through their financial aid department, to have work-study students who, some of you, as you've come through the office, probably saw our two young ladies this year, who will happily be back next year. So as part of their own financial aid, Bay Path has offered to all of our town offices the opportunity to have students who work as part of their financial aid, so about 20 hours a week, and they're paid by the college. So we really benefited from that this year in the office for just very basic clerical tasks. I think we really enjoyed having them around. They were very refreshing and so forth. We're already signed up for the fall to have more interns, predominantly through psychology and education, to have them also continue to work in the buildings. And we're working on kind of expanding our relationship with the graduate program in occupational therapy. We're hoping two of our staff were available this year to do professional development for them, and they have provided students for us as well. So it continues to be a really nice relationship, and even at the very simplest level, using the building, using that lovely facility. I know you did a lot of PD there this year, and it's just a nice, refreshing change. It's a mile away from everywhere and a very, very pleasant place to go and to work. We'll be there next week.
We will.
And so, they really have been very, very good neighbors, and it's nice to be part of that relationship.
And that's certainly a partnership that's helped us look at the whole child, is they're hitting programs that are certainly helping us do a better job in supporting all our students in many different ways. One of the things we did this year in strengthening partnerships is we have increased our partnership with our own East Long Meadow Health Department, but also our work with the Springfield Health and Human Services Department. And that, actually, that partnership began through the East Long Meadow Youth Safety Committee. And this year, through mostly the grant that is managed by the Springfield Health and Human Services Department, we were able to purchase online surveys that are a nationally normed survey, preventative needs survey, and give those surveys to our eighth, 10th, and 12th graders. And what that, hopefully in the future, will help us do, we've already started to comb through the results of those surveys, so there are certain things that we'll be able to do this summer from that information. But now, we're starting to see reports as to how East Long Meadow students might, in a particular area of decision-making, compare to the national norm, which could then open up the possibility of us receiving grants and be able to offer different programming to support students. One of the things you heard at the mid-cycle, that we had just begun and had just been formed, was our District Diversity and Equity Steering Committee. It's a committee that had 21 members, representing students, staff, parents, administrators, and school committee. That group was able to meet officially six times, while also having a smaller group meet in between meetings to help set agenda, agendas, and do some research in terms of different questions that may have come up from the larger group. It also allowed us to vet and eventually select a group, an outside group, and I'll let Mrs. Brown take this further, because she had a ton of work around making this happen. This is a group called the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity, and they've worked with school systems in the past to build school systems' capacity to do this type of work, and also help build capacity to do things like an equity audit and so forth. But I'll let Mrs. Brown take us further into that.
Yeah, so they had a great record in Rhode Island, Cedar, Rhode Island, and they've done so well, they've got so many different grants, that they are now expanding their work outside of the state. So we looked at three different organizations, and this rose to the top. We had a rubric that the committee looked at, and we talked quite a bit, and we reached out to different references. And so, their work really will be, like Mr. Smith said, around improving the climate for inclusivity and promoting diversity and embracing differences and closing the achievement gaps for our underserved students. But the coolest thing about it is that they don't just come and do things to us, they build the capacity using us. So, and they will, they have a track record of really supporting districts in this work, so.
You want to walk us through the Bridges Program?
NCCJ Bridges. So we also partnered with NCCJ Bridges. It's the, and now, of course, I'm going to forget what it stands for, but it will come to me. And they are a national organization, but they have a branch in Windsor, Connecticut. They work with a lot of different area schools. They're connected with the Social Justice Program at UMass Amherst. And so, one of the things they did was a two-day prejudice reduction workshop. We had 23 high school students who attended, and it really is about empowering young kids to make change in their communities. We're gonna expand this partnership, I believe, to the middle school next year. And we have six students who are attending their leadership camp this summer. So they'll come back with tools to lead this work within the student community. So there's some exciting things happening.
We'll move to next slide, so that you can...
And that was just, yeah, the Bridges Program, all the kids that were involved.
And that took place over at Bay Path.
Yes.
We are utilizing their spaces when they are open and free, to give us technology and a great space to do professional developments.
And very, just very helpful and welcoming. It's nice.
So that's the district-level view of that first goal, and now we're gonna hand off to the schools to start taking a look at how they've connected at the elementary, middle, and high school levels regarding focusing on the whole child.
Okay, so that first slide is Maple Shade Elementary School for our social-emotional goal. We've developed many successful social and emotional support programs and a positive school climate for students in our school. The results of these successes all display a culture of collaborative planning, improvement, and togetherness, which is the one instructional thread in student expectation that I think brings us success through all of these goals in our presentation. That is, the collaborative planning factor is the factor that's the biggest factor that I think is a result of the exceptional improvements that we've made in our school. The first picture in the top left shows students working together socially and experiencing emotional joy when building their paper roller coasters during our grant-funded Playful Engineers program. The picture in the middle depicts the emotional safety experienced every morning during our walking club. The top-right picture is an example of collaborative planning and scientific testing in a social setting to conduct an investigation during our Girls Excelling in Math and Science, which is a after-school program we call GEMS. The picture on the bottom left shows students, once again, socially and emotionally successful through collaborative planning as they improve their background, their playground designs during an enrichment maker education class. The last picture on the bottom right was a huge success for our school's climate and culture as we embarked upon our first-ever whole-school field trip to see the play Rosie Revere: The Engineer and Friends at Springfield Symphony Hall. We took up the entire center section, front to back, of Symphony Hall, and had a really wonderful time. It was a great experience for the whole school. We're gonna try to repeat that next year at another performance. It was so much fun. The trip was also planned because we received ELEAF grant funding to purchase multiple sets of texts for each classroom, Rosie Revere: Engineer, Iggy Pet: Architect, and Ada Twist: Scientist. Our school continues to improve on the everyday classroom and school environment experiences for children's social and emotional growth. This work is supported by our school's counseling and school psychologist services, our student mentor program, Second Step Curriculum, The Sandy Hook Promise, Look for the Good, Kid Yoga Movement and Mindfulness, the Social Justice League, after-school programs, and Before School Walking Club.
You're presenting for all...
Right, so I have Mountain View. They're equally as wonderful. So the Mountain View staff have taken what they've learned from the social-emotional leaders that have spoken at the district-wide professional development days and turned their words into action. Todd Nislooney was the inspiration for Amy Pelzik's social media intern program, which has turned Mountain View into a Twitter powerhouse. And Todd also introduced the Caught in the Act whiteboard on Elaine's office wall, where students sign their names when they're caught doing the right thing. Trevor Reagan came to East Long Meadow after Megan Bargatti, third-grade special educator, got the Mountain View staff on board with being Jungle Tiger, and begged to have him as a keynote speaker. Now, students are proud when their own tiger gets moved from the zoo to the jungle on the hallway bulletin boards created by paraprofessional Michael Cady. This year, George Kurros cemented for the staff how important the climate at Mountain View is when he said, "If we want meaningful change, we have to make a connection to the heart before we can make a connection to the mind." These images illustrate three great ways the Mountain View staff have developed relationships with students to promote social-emotional learning for everyone. Starting at the top left is an illustration of concepts involved in restorative practices which Elaine and Guidance Council Norma Campbell learned about at a workshop they attended this year, and begin to implement when possible, rather than more traditional discipline. Our goal is for students to realize the impact their behavior has on others and take responsibility for their actions, rather than giving a punishment that usually doesn't make sense. On the right is a screenshot from the Mountain View Twitter account. For the second year in a row, students who work with our speech pathologist, Dorita Henderson, learned how to play a board game in their sessions with her to reinforce skills taught in therapy, which they then had to teach to the staff at the May Staff Meeting. The teachers rotated through multiple stations, and the students became the teachers. The students were truly jungle tigers, and so much more than academics was learned through this activity, social skills, teamwork, and relationship building. Adding fun activities to staff meetings also came from keynote speaker Todd Nislooney, and Mountain View has implemented an element of fun into almost every staff meeting for the last two years. Lastly, on the bottom left is a short video of our Friday dance party. This was started about four years ago by the PE teacher, Michelle Bon Giovanni, who then passed the torch to Elaine, who is now the DJ every Friday. The students and staff look forward to this week, as you'll see in this video from a recent Friday morning. So I guess there's a video there. For Heather?
Yes. Sorry. I don't know. Let's choose this.
Oh.
Yeah, every Friday, yeah, when they're coming off the bus.
This is taking place as students are arriving to school, and I can say that we feel that calls around making sure buses are on time on Fridays, because they are missing the dance party.
Some kids come in car line. Just to make sure they're there.
We'll make sure we're better getting them there, well in advance of that.
So although social-emotional learning is hard to quantify with data, another quote from George Kurros' book, The Innovator's Mindset, is really quitting for what Mountain View tries to live by. The three most important words in education are relationships, relationships, relationships. Without them, we have nothing. And then at Meadowbrook, our Guidance Department has delivered Second Step lessons to all K1 and 2 classrooms. They focus on developing emotional vocabulary, regulation, and problem-solving skills. In our survey results, the students identified strategies for calming and how often they use them. These are important skills in the academic environment, because we learn and collaborate best when our emotions are regulated. As you can see, deep belly breaths, positive self-talk, and counting slowly are strategies many of our students now access. In the video, a first-grade student shows us how she uses her emotional vocabulary to champion worry feelings. Our counselors emphasize skills development and the ability that our students have within themselves to handle big feelings. This year, they piloted using technology, like the green screen video, where students can tangibly see their thoughts, and chatter pics, where they can draw a picture of their feelings and give it a voice. Students...
It's kind of hard to see that.
Sometimes my worry shows up and it says it's a chore.
You're not going to work out, right?
Worry shows up and makes me feel very small and scared. This is my imaginary friend in my brain. She helps me keep scared. She tells me it's all right, we don't have to worry about it. I think of good times like when I went down the sled with my mom and snow.
So those, that's the elementary schools for social emotional growth and development.
So we've pretty aligned with the elementaries in the sense that we've had such a focus on this. This year, more than any, we saw a rising number of challenges in both social emotionals like self-regulation, as well as like the level of trauma that many of our students had dealt with or were dealing with. So, but we also saw more opportunity because of this, and we saw a lot of chances to support kids in a really meaningful way. So sort of the bullet points of what we did, you know, we continue to grow our advisory lessons on Thursdays, which are focused right around the five competencies of social emotional learning. Those are full, they were full school lessons this year. By next year, we'll have, this year we had a sixth grade lesson and then a seventh and eighth grade lesson. Next year, finally, we'll have a sixth grade lesson, a seventh grade lesson, and an eighth grade lesson. And those happen every Thursday, and they've still been going well. We're getting good feedback from teachers. We had a mindfulness focus in sixth and seventh grade this year, so that grew to two grade levels now. And next year, we have to figure out how to get mindfulness continued in eighth. We continue to use the social emotional money we get to hire mentors. We hired two fantastic mentors in January. They were a huge part of our culture and just the impact they have is really amazing to watch. Mr. Martin continued his art of teaching and vetted professional development. The turn that that made this year, that's all about, every kid needs a champion, how do we socially emotionally support kids? But the turn we made there this year was to start to try and give language to social emotional teaching strategies. You know, everybody can recite the teach like a champion teaching strategies, but not everybody can recite like actual things you can do socially emotionally. So for example, one that we reviewed is called Write, Rip, and Throw Away. And that's when your class comes in and you can just sense that there's more going on than meets the eye and maybe we can't do an activator in the first 30 seconds. So they write down what's bothering them, they literally rip it up, and they literally throw it away as the teacher walks around. And if you do this enough, it teaches them to leave their emotions at the door. So we started to try and give things a name in terms of social emotional strategies of instruction. A part of my staff chose Lost at School for the book study that we did, which was the book aligned to this goal. So we did a book study this year where the teachers could pick one of three books. So they had some autonomy, they improved their motivation, and Lost at School was the one focused on this, and a lot of students picked that book. And if you haven't read it, it's sort of, it's one of the first books that really initiated this new look at students and how we got to see them differently and not just as numbers and not just as groups. And then just at Birchland, and I appreciate what you said, Ms. Martian Boucher, like we're just all about relationships, period. So that's sort of the driving force. And I know that we have three goals, and we have three, the same three goals as the school. But I also have to acknowledge that every year, Mr. Martin and I tend to put the most passion into one goal. And even though we keep all three going, we feel like we're most invested in one. And I would argue that this was year two of us focusing on this goal the most, and it's probably time to rotate where our biggest passion lies and where we dedicate the most time. But I think it's been, I think it has really mattered because it's changed how our school sees kids, it's changed how our school reacts to at-risk kids. I may have told this story before, but my, literally my favorite moment of this school year was we received a new student, straight from a foreign country, coming from a lot, a lot of different issues, not coming here for good reasons, not speaking English. And I bumped into a teacher conversation in the hallway, they didn't see me coming, and they were arguing over who got the kid. Not who didn't, like I don't want the kid, like they were arguing over who got the kid. And that was like a huge moment for me to realize like that we were getting there, we were getting there. So we tried to provide some statistics here, that's one of our advisories in a circle activity on a Thursday morning. In the green, there's some, we did the, I think I talked about this already, but we did the student surveys now, we do them in the middle of the year, and then we review the data and do them again at the end of the year. And you can see some really high numbers there for how kids felt. You can see that, as always, we still have work to do on bullying and students reporting bullying. That was a different number than normal. In the yellow, that's school-wide statistics of last year versus this year. So even though we had maybe the most challenging year, at least anecdotally with students, we were down seven and a half percent in the amount of write-ups that came to the office. We were down 75% in the amount of suspensions. I'm sure you all know that we are struggling with student attendance, so it's really important to get the suspensions down because that's the attendance that we control, right? We don't, it's hard to control who gets there and we got to work on how to control that better. But at least by less, lowering our suspensions, we're controlling what we can control attendance-wise. And then our SAM meetings, SAM meetings went up by 26%. And SAM meetings are an important data point because teachers ask for those. So like they say, we need a SAM meeting on said student. So the more that we're seeing those happening, the more teachers are really zoning in on individual students. And then our social emotional classroom was a huge success, huge success. The teacher was phenomenal, the school culture embraced it, and by the end, he was teaching 10 different grades and subjects. He had 13 different students that he was written into their grid, and then he had another 12 students that we were just sort of using him for mentoring. So we have really focused on this goal a lot, and we think we're seeing really positive impact because of it.
And your social emotional teacher continues to consult with other teachers as well?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, he's part of the Learning Center team, and he, anytime his, a lot of his kids are, no, not a lot, almost 95% of his kids are with him for one or two subjects, so they're not there all day. So then he has to consult with the inclusion teacher and the core teachers as well. So this would just to get some more pictures in there, but that's a small group, that's a social skills group on the left, run by our adjustment counselor. And on the right, you know, I talk a lot about relationships, this was just a wonderful sixth grader who talked a lot of smack and brought in this picture after Warriors Week against Celtics. But that's an example of how engaged my teachers are with their individual relationships. That was just the morning after, and you know, some fun to be had.
All right, at the high school this year, we've also spent or invested a lot of time effort and resources into supporting all of our students' social emotional well-being, ranging from the first three days through our Spartan Block to our, we offer four, or this year we had four sections of wellness for students who needed a more therapeutic environment. Our PE staff became all yoga certified throughout the course of the year and started embedding yoga and mindfulness into their, into all of their curricula, as well as providing that opportunity for staff at PD. We have started a relationship with River Valley Counseling with the intent of providing some of our more involved students an even more intensive option that they can access throughout the school day next year. Our special ed liaisons also, as part of their PLC work this year, they also read Lost at School and started devising and putting together like handouts for the rest of the staff so that everybody can get a different perspective when a student presents different challenging behaviors. And then more recently, Dr. Flanagan and a lot of our, quite a number of students remodeled the, our small courtyard into a peaceful zen garden that I think everybody took advantage of at the recognition ceremony as well, and have been hard at work remodeling and updating Room 101, our social emotional room, to include even different colors, more of a, like a tealish-green kind of common color, a C background on one of the walls. The seating in that room is, has been a little more flexible throughout the course of this year with some of the more comfortable seating, but that type of more flexible seating, including standing desks and those sitting bikes, are going to be available as the program expands next year. So with that, we wanted to try and quantify how effective these measures were becoming throughout the course of the year and how students were recognizing these interventions and how, between all the things that we're trying to do at the high school, how the students are feeling about it. So we gauge them in their confidence academics, their, just their general confidence at school, how they feel, do they feel valued or not? What kind of voice do they have in all their classes? How many, you know, how often are they asked to be creative? How are they doing emotionally by the end of the year? And then just how much they enjoy all of their classes. And you can see, we definitely are overall pretty strong in many of the areas with a majority of our students feeling on the more positive side of things. We definitely have a ways to go as far as to try and find what each, you know, what each student really needs to improve every student's experience here at the high school.
Was this nine through 12?
Yes.
When did you do it?
We did it, I want to say March, March.
So they were able to reflect on all of their experience, both in the classroom and in the school, and throughout their co-curricular, extracurricular activities, and kind of share with us how they are, how they're feeling about it.
The one area that we were very surprised, and obviously this kind of gives some credence to the need for social motion programming at the high school, is the question, from an emotional perspective, what kind of year did you have overall? 43% of our students said they were feeling good or great, but 23% said that they were struggling. And I think that's way too high, and you know, with some of the things that we're planning for next year and some of the interventions, we hope to see that number go down by the end of the year.
Interesting, I have the opposite approach, appreciation. I'm saying that 77%.
Are feeling good.
High school.
Yeah.
That's a pretty holistic statistic, 77% in March.
Yeah.
Especially seniors.
Yeah, but you gotta focus on that 23, that for whatever reason, they're just, you know.
I looked at it the same way, but I understand what you're saying about the 23.
Yeah, we want all our kids to feel good and feel safe, feel safe, so it's a number we definitely have to work on.
Thank you. Okay. Moving to Goal Two, as we do all of our work, we're looking to support our teachers in helping them engage their students in different ways, in new ways, and certainly in relevant ways, providing opportunities for their students to develop and hopefully master 21st century skills and have these type of experience throughout the district. From the district level, what we did, and some of this came through our professional development days, is we focused on supporting all of our staff and engaging their students in 21st century skills. One of the highlights, and this wasn't necessarily something that we added this year, but it's something worth celebrating, is that for many years in our Gifted and Talented program, the push-in program, and if everybody remembers that at Meadowbrook, we push into all classes, there's no pull-out. So the Gifted and Talented teacher works with the other teachers and looks to augment and supplement what teachers are doing in the classroom at the different grade levels, predominantly with science and...
Physical science in particular.
Right, and sort of design-based learning. And that same push-in approach happens all the way through grade five. And you're seeing that type of sharing and planning. This year, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education contracted with a researcher to look at Gifted and Talented programming and education across the Commonwealth. And we're going to be one of four districts that are highlighted in that report specifically on our push-in program. And so that's something that not only is worth mentioning, but really celebrating because that's been a collaborative effort for years in our elementary schools. And it touches all of our students. Then, many of you participated and attended District-wide STEM Night, which was really impressive, was housed at Meadowbrook, but it involved the entire district. And it gave a look at how you see some of this new instruction going from the youngest grade levels all the way to the high school. You had high school students in the library, if I remember, showing some of the video games that they created, which I fail miserably at every time I try. And then you also had, in the gymnasium, you had middle school students that were pulling over elementary students and sharing with them how they can code and look at different things, and so it was really impressive.
And upper elementary students as well, we're teaching some of our young kids.
Awesome.
Yep.
So upper elementary students as well, I should have got a picture of them as well.
We got a picture of you.
Yeah, that's true.
Teaching you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Brown. And we also be learning, so I was right there, learning from our students, which is great. That's the best way to partner with them. Not only that, we're expanding, we're seeing smaller maker spaces start to be developed in other schools. And then we started to look at, in hopes, and it did come to fruition through the budget process, we started to look at how we're supporting our staff, not only with the digital literacy and computer science standards, but also how might we start to support them should one-to-one come to fruition? And with this budget that was just recently passed by town, it will come to fruition. And I know Mrs. Brown's going to walk us through a couple of things that happened this school year, and we'll have to build upon even more so next school year.
So definitely the professional development again, given by teachers, two teachers around using Google Classroom and the Google Suite because we are a Google school district, using assistive technology for students because the one-to-one will allow us to really provide different access points to all students who might not have had them before. I did a PD at Mountain View on Gale databases and Noodle tools, which are, we're going to be available to everyone in the district for research purposes and just helping kids with a research process, and just expanding direct instruction and coding media and digital literacy and citizenship. As Mr. Smith said, at that STEM night at K-12, you could really see the continuum from kindergarten's coding with the mice all the way up to the AP Computer Science students writing code. It was pretty neat. So the idea of using these tools, not just to deliver information, but for how kids to create their own, use it to create instead of just, you know, taking in information, I think will be a big push.
If I can throw one comment in real quick. Back in early April, I attended the National School Board Conference in Philadelphia, and they had a number of breakout sessions on the beginnings of maker spaces in school districts. We're so far ahead of the curve when it comes to that stuff, it's unreal. Because I sat there going, we're already doing this stuff. And there, there's a lot of districts across the country that are just starting to take advantage of this. So I think it's a credit to our initiatives to get, to keep going in this direction.
If you go to college campuses now, they often have handy maker spaces.
Yeah, they do.
It's really interesting. And so this is an example of those 21st century instructional practices. So this is a middle school math teacher doing a very well-received PD, I shouldn't have put him in this room because there was too many people, on writing, using escape games to teach whatever subject area. And so I wanted to show you how this escape room, you know, had the kids collaborating, communicating, creating all the things that we want them to do, while doing a lot of really intense math that they would normally, might not want to do, to the point that he said that he had 30 kids come after school just to finish the escape room, even though they had already gotten their points for the math that they had done. And excuse me, I was, this is going to work, but it just was making kind of funny. So this is, it's just a minute long, and it's the escape room that he did in the school, and then he taught other teachers how to do this. Shortly after, we saw a lot of folks using this idea to really engage.
He would be the person in the spacesuit.
Yeah, so they're on a, in a space station. And so speaking of maker space, he used our laser cutter to make, oh, sorry, the Birchland Park's laser cutter to make these cutouts, these puzzles. Parks laser cutter to make these cutouts, these puzzles. After the, I kept taking away this one, this one. I don't want to interrupt the math discussion. I think it was also Hawaiian Day.
I was wondering, I love that kind of kid.
I like the music in the background.
Yeah, it was supposed to be... Yep.
So in order to move on, they have to solve the first problem.
They get codes to put into the computer, because they did on Google Forms, but they also get lockbox codes. But you'll see that everyone's engaged, and everyone's working together to figure out these problems. These guys got to this point, they're very excited.
Another box, yes.
Seeing this in person is unbelievable. It's unbelievable. And the math is so rigorous when you do it. Like, it's not fluff, it's like the hardest math they do.
Right.
And they're all engaged.
And loving it.
We had kids come after school the second-to-last day of school, like Thursday, to finish a seventh, they, entire seventh grade math combined, so there was 60 kids in the escape room at one time, all for the last three days of school.
And this was a new one?
That was a new one, yeah.
So it's pretty impressive, those, because if you go back to that picture real quick, you have all different grade levels in all different content areas, learning how to set up the escape rooms, and they can use them for any content area, which is, it was very impressive. And it was a packed crowd, there's even more people this way, I just couldn't get them on camera. They were ducking away from the camera. If you go to the next slide, this was something that, it's a little harder to see, because it actually came through the Google Classroom, it was a Google Classroom announcement from our instructional technology specialists at the high school. And it was just a moment in time at the end of the year where he was recognizing what had been accomplished and what they've put together in just one year's time with this position being the first of its kind in the East Long Meadow Public Schools. And it's sort of a stepping stone as we move into the reality that we're going to be able to be one-to-one, pretty much grades two through 12. And just at the bottom there, so he put together 22 tech cafes, 24 district educators are ready for Google certification, those happened, I think, predominantly on the two professional development days, 14 virtual and augmented reality expeditions, six escape room challenges, six teacher websites that are now ready for publishing, Padlet portfolios in fine arts, 12 podcast episodes in journalism and sports lit. So it also gives you an idea that even though he's using the framework of the Google Classroom, not everything is, you know, the Google Suite. There's many different things that people have connected with. Flipgrid, speaking activities in world languages, iMovie and ThinkLink projects in the humanities, evaluating sources and integrating Google Scholar for research, and formative assessments using Albert I.O. and Google Forms. One of the things we were doing throughout the year was looking at, how do we get quicker-hitting, more formative assessments that we can look at more frequently, but it's not taking an entire class period, and it's focusing maybe on just a few of your priority standards, instead of, say, nine priority standards. And so that's just one year at one school.
Gordon, I think back at the mid-cycle, we talked about potentially having, I think it was the tech cafes available to the entire district, as opposed to just restricting the access to the high school.
Yeah, so if that's something that we can pull off beyond the professional development days, we'll take a look at that. And that was one of the reasons why we also looked at, hopefully, adding instructional technology specialists. But certainly, he's got the, you know, the set sort of format, and see how we expand...
Were those the ones that were taped? Wasn't there something that we saw that was taped that was kind of like, that could be shared?
Tech cafes, were they, I think they're taped.
Yeah, because those would have been...
And we can share those out.
Without necessarily having to have...
Having, have him travel to schools. Yep, yep. And so those are some of the things, actually, next week, someone alluded to the fact that we'd be over at Bay Path, that we'll start to, I think Dr. Welsh did, that we go from sort of this celebration into planning, starting next week, and looking at how we expand that across the district. And I think this group has said that the focus needs to be supporting one-to-one and making sure teachers feel that they are able to integrate this and use this on a daily basis, and so that's going to be a large part of our discussion. Moving from sort of the district perspective, going into the elementaries, I think, mistaken? Are you picking it up?
I am, yes. And we're going to begin with Mountain View. So this slide shows student engagement and 21st century learning experiences at Mountain View. Okay, so this is a screenshot from third-grade teacher Kristi Parsiali's Twitter feed, and it shows a practice she has implemented throughout the year. The students created and planned their own lesson plan based on something they learned this year and then taught the class. This screenshot shows pictures of three different lessons created by her third graders, who are using technology to collaborate, create, communicate, use critical thinking skills, and develop leadership skills while teaching a lesson to their peers based on curriculum standards. A couple of students invited Elaine to observe their lessons, and she gave them written feedback cards, like she does after completing many observations of the teachers. The kids loved that they were being treated like real teachers, and the Twitter comments were very positive also. This video, also posted on the Mountain View Twitter feed, comes from the spring concert produced by Mountain View's music teacher, Danielle Peran. Students wrote the music and lyrics to songs based on novels they read in their ELA classes, class. Each of the five classes wrote their own song, and then each class learned the lyrics to all five songs before performing them for parents, using instruments purchased with a very generous ELEAF grant received by the grades, three to five music teachers. The students needed to be creative, collaborative, and able to communicate a summary of a novel through music. This song is based on the Newberry Award-winning novel, Shiloh.
So first of all, thank you for being patient with me throughout this year, as I sat back, but I actually have a voice. Well, the first time in ten months. So, we'll see how long it lasts, but for four days I've been able to speak, so I thought I'd grab a chance to show off for a minute. So I'm going to share a little bit about Maple Shade. Maple Shade students continue to have many innovative learning experiences at school. As you're going to see, most of these pictures highlight their continued commitment to STEM instruction. The top-left photograph is an example of what has already been alluded to, which was that STEM night that was held at Meadowbrook School. Maple Shade students have all had the privilege to learn about science, technology, and engineering through robotics. Their students designed robots, robots, sorry, and artistically uniformed them to mimic the sounds and movements of a specific animal. They then came to Meadowbrook and showcased their work by teaching our students how to program their robots during STEM night. The second picture on the top right shows students engaged in computer science and coding through Project Lead the Way, which is a grant-funded curriculum. Here, they're using Tinker to design their own video game. Maybe Gordon can try that one instead. The next picture on the bottom right is a component of an energy unit created by Roger Williams University. And here, the students have created a wind turbine that actually records a load of two volts of energy on a multimeter using a fan. The last picture on the bottom left, while not STEM-related, is a great example of instructional practice in writing, and is an excellent example of what persuasive writers are accomplishing for the greater good. Fifth-grade students at Mountain View, sorry, Maple Shade, see, maybe it's not a good thing that I have my voice. Fifth-grade students at Maple Shade wrote letters to school officials, businesses, nonprofit organizations, politicians, persuading them to make impactful changes. Here you see Mr. Smith working with a student. Mr. Smith and Mr. Fredette, together, after working with this young lady, made changes to the bathrooms and water fountains of Maple Shade School. And currently, the East Long Meadow Public Library is considering creating a maker space of their own as a result of one of their students' persuasive letters. All of the above would not be accomplished without one important practice that is prevalent at Maple Shade, and that is collaborative planning, revision, improvement, and togetherness. Even student writing is a part of the collaborative planning process through the use of Google Classroom.
So this is Meadowbrook School. The picture on the top left was taken during our STEM family event. We had various coding and maker space activities set up for families to participate in. We invited upper elementary, middle school, and high school students to set up stations to give families an idea of how coding progresses over the years from kindergarten to grade 12. For example, Faith Went, our GNT teacher, set up a coding activity for early elementary students utilizing Kivo robotics. In this picture, you see middle school student Lucas Mantoni demonstrating how he used coding with microbits to create a video game. And our student, Carter Carroll, was absolutely obsessed with this station, he was there for a good portion of the night, he kept playing the video, it was amazing. And the high school AP Science computer students showed us what coding looks like at their level with their robotics program and their video games that they created as well.
It's very challenging.
Yes, yes. It was just amazing to see what it looked like, K through 12. This year, we focused a good amount of our professional development on innovative teaching practices. Building on the work of Trevor Reagan, the keynote speaker during our November District PD Day, we focused on the idea of stepping outside of our comfort zone and learning like a jungle tiger. This three-part PD provided teachers the opportunity to have hands-on experience with innovative teaching practices such as coding, green screen, applications, maker space challenges, and effective classroom technology integration. This PD was developed and facilitated by our newly-created innovation team as part of our two-year plan to encourage innovative teaching practices while incorporating the DLCS standards. The second slide gives us a few examples of how our teachers learned like a jungle tiger and came out of their comfort zone and tried new innovative practices. You'll see some teachers did take a shot at escape rooms, coding activities, maker space, QR coding, coding games, et cetera. And ST Math, a visual math program that builds a deep conceptual understanding of math through rigorous learning and creative problem solving, started this year with a grant. As this was our first year, and we started slowly with only second grade, we set our goal simply around usage. This usage fidelity report shows how well Meadowbrook School has implemented ST Math. ST Math quantifies a school's usage across an entire school year into a single number, it's called the usage fidelity metric. We reached a usage fidelity metric of 89.7%, which exceeded the expectation of 80. The expectation usually for the first year is around 80. Next year, kindergarten will begin ST Math with the same goal we had for the second grade this year. Our second-grade team will begin digging deeper into ST Math and integrating it as part of the core math teaching. Teachers will continue to receive PD around understanding reports, using puzzle talks, and much more.
If I can add to that, Mrs. Lody, we got the report cards on Friday, and we were talking about them on Saturday, I had taken the ST Math instructions out, granted, it's one anecdote, but our son was so excited that he was going to be able to continue with ST Math, that we immediately had to get the iPad, we had to load it, and he probably spent a good hour. The day after school got out, engaged in ST Math.
That's amazing.
Because that's how exciting he was.
Because it's through games and puzzles and...
He was thrilled that he was going to be able to engage with that all summer, and thrilled by all of the positive reinforcement in terms of like the golden GGs, and dressed like GG, and our three-year-old daughter knew who GG was. But it just speaks to how that program really was more than just a computer program. It really helped to impact its confidence and impacted just their love of math.
I'm a little confused, ST Math and Eureka, are we teaching both?
ST Math is a computer program that we receive, we have it also at Mountain View in third grade, and it'll go into fourth grade next year.
So it's an additional supplement resource.
It goes along with our math curriculum.
So we're also teaching Eureka math curriculum, correct?
Yeah, we still use that as a resource, yes.
What's the resource?
They are both are, ST Math, Eureka. The resources within the curriculum.
Okay, but you're also building skills through ST Math that can be utilized by students as they continue through the curriculum.
Following the standards.
So one thing our math coach did was they took the scoping sequence of the ST Math programming, and they aligned it to the scoping sequence of Eureka. So the kids, at the same time, are, for the most part, unless they're pretty advanced in getting through the puzzle challenges, are right with the Eureka scoping sequence at the same time that it's taught in the classroom.
And it's all visual and very, it can be very challenging as well.
By half-fall the grandparents off, did they?
There's no words.
It's like the Eureka is boring math, and the ST Math is fun.
It was the feisty, isn't it?
So ST Math was designed by a neurologist who is dyslexic, so it was to give kids opportunity to really learn math concepts without language getting in the way. But what's really interesting about it is that the kids who normally might fly through math because they're memorizing algorithms find themselves struggling because you really need to understand the concepts in order to get the help.
K through five, pre-K through five?
K through five.
Well, yeah. We're implementing...
We're just... Okay, yeah. But what's happening at the middle school now is they're sick of the Penguin.
Yeah.
Doing ST Math, but now it's gone in the lower base, and now they're like, no more Penguin, and we're like, okay, fine, the program.
That's because they don't get it, you only want the answer in the middle school.
You said Wayne's your presentation. No, sorry, I just...
Actually, that's true, we are.
Sure you were, nice job.
Maybe I'm smooth, anyway, you are.
Tell us how you wind up all the digits.
That's my next slide, my tiered stuff. So innovation at Burchland this year, it was a great year, and it was really teacher-driven, because we relied on the district to provide most of the innovation-type PDs. We used one of our half-days where we had six different sets of teachers, each presents something innovative that they do, and so teachers, we did like a mini EdCamp at our school, but that was literally just one of our half-days. So everything you're about to see really was teacher-driven, it was not top-down. So the first bullet, obviously, is that. We saw increased use of our laser cutter, we saw, we went from having one green screen that Connor messed around with to four green screens, that was always rotating classes. The biggest increase we saw was in student-produced video learning. So teachers really started to let students use creation of videos to demonstrate what they knew. So for example, in our film festival, my favorite film in the film festival was a four-minute film by a seventh-grade student all about the constant of proportionality, and like, I understood it more after watching it. And then escape room instruction, Burchland has been really all over that, both by the gentleman you saw leading that PD, but also other teachers, my Spanish department's great room. At our first-ever film festival, we talked about, in seventh grade, we offered our coding class for the first time ever, so a large percentage of seventh graders actually took a class on coding. Our tech ed program really improved in a lot of new ways this year, including a great internet on programming drones, so it's not uncommon to walk into Burchland and see drones flying around that are actually programmed to fly a certain way and not crash, more about that in a minute. Microbits entered our STEAM classroom, which you saw happening over at Meadowbrook as well, which is very cool. Our DLCS classes, that you know I presented last year, the class catalog for how we wanted to change that whole department, thank you for approving that, and they were in full swing this year. I want to give a little bit of a shout-out to Media Print Literacy, which is the class that we created, and just the cool stuff they do in there, like the teacher gave a survey about her class, and she shared it with me and her evidence meeting, and like so many of the kids said, just plain and simple, I will never look at an advertisement the same ever again. Because they just really analyze, like, even alcohol advertisements and what they see. And I remember walking in there once this year, and there was a picture on the wall, and I'm like, what is going on? And she's like, hold on, wait a minute. It was a picture behind it, it came next to a PlayStation controller. And this was an actual ad, that was clearly meant to go to sway young. Ah, so they were analyzing that. Ah, so they were analyzing that, writing about it. So, very cool, um, part of DLCS. Our eighth-grade students all presenting the individual passion projects. That was wonderful. Shout-out to Mr. MacRinney at the high school for helping me figure out how to do that in a way that I could make work. Our first-year Vex Robotics team, they qualified for and attended Worlds. You know, as much as that's a cool metric, I thought it was even cooler that the week after Worlds, they were already starting on the challenge of next year. So they didn't just stop and rest on their laurels. We also got an adventure club up and running, which we're psyched about. We hired a teacher a year ago. We used to run an adventure club when he taught in Colorado. We don't have quite what Colorado has to offer. They have fifty sixth graders like Mount Tom, Mount Tom at the end of the year. And so that's going to keep going. So he's, he's phenomenal. Our Makerspace challenges continued, which should seem kind of easy, but we did have a new librarian, so it was really important that we kept that tradition going. And then we had a hundred and fifteen eighth graders go to Washington DC, which that was just a phenomenal trip. We've booked it again. We're not, we're not putting a limit on it again. Like, we were just, just, that couldn't have gone better than it did, and we're really excited to sort of have that up and running at such a large level. Three buses. I was on it. Fifteen adults. But I'll, just one anecdote to, to close is, the other day, I was in the main lobby. Those of you that came to Passion Project saw, like, the Passion Project Central. And we had, like, third graders coming in and out, going up to the Makerspace to do,
Playful Engineering.
Playful Engineering, which is the grant Mr. Fredette writes. So basically, we have third graders upstairs doing Rube Goldberg in our Makerspace. We have the drone unit coming to a close, where, so there's drones flying all around the hallway, kids fixing their programming. And then we have, in one day, a hundred and thirty eighth graders making presentations on something they're passionate about. And it just like, I, I was like looking around, and like, it sounds cheesy, but I was like, "This is how it's supposed to, this is what it's supposed to be. Like, this is what school should be now." Those are all 21st-century skills, and I need to make sure we align the 21st-century skill learning with the MCAS learning as well. But like, those are the skills that are going to go to what they do later in life. So that was a cool moment, and it was even cooler because my poor secretary, who never leaves the main office, ever, came to tell me something at the Passion Project table. She was there four seconds, and a drone that was programmed wrong flew into her hair. I was like, "Of all people, like, you've never, you've never..." So then we had an emergency, like, "Get a drone out of someone's hair." So, now we have a plan for that. The next slide, just real quick. That's sixth graders making a video about something they learned. Top left, using the green screen technology in the hallway. Top right is students in seventh grade working in our Makerspace on a design project related to social studies learning. In the middle, that's eighth-grade English students who, after they finish reading The Giver, play, do a Shark Tank activity where they invent something that could be sold in the setting of The Giver, and a bunch of us go in and really make it like Shark Tank and we bid and everything. Bottom left was an incredible student giving her passion project on Sword Art Online. And bottom right is what Ms. Dakin talked about. That was a few of our students presenting the Future City Club stuff over to the Meadowbrook students and staff.
Okay. So at the high school, as you all know, we're getting ready for our one-to-one, and it's been a very long journey, and we're very, very excited about it. I think our teachers and our students are, are really going to be well-prepared, given all the work that we've put into it. Mr. Zilchaz, Superintendent Smith, shared with you earlier, he's been doing a lot of legwork with the teachers, trying to get them more comfortable in using this technology. And so one of the things that we are offering our high school staff this summer is we are going to do a summer professional development focused on two areas. One update of training is going to be focused solely on Google Suite and Google Classroom because we want to make Google Classroom kind of our primary center for classroom learning at the high school. So for example, students walk in and they pop up their Google Classroom. It could have the agenda for the day. It could have the activator for the day. It could have a blog that they need to respond to, but trying to make the, the classrooms interactive and maximizing this wonderful tool that we have been very blessed to receive for next year. The idea is that the second part of the day is going to be technology content. So we're going, we're looking right now for a math specialist that will focus purely on how math could be integrated with technology, because that, we find, is one of the hardest areas to integrate technology is, is math. So we're looking to bring somebody in for just the math teachers. And then the second focus of that day is how to use technology in literacy-based courses. So this really would, you know, maximize all of our courses and try to just, just get the most out of the technology that we're going to be using next year. We're going to continue the focus for instructional technology at the high school next year. We have traditionally allowed our teachers to take part in PLCs, which traditionally they've picked the type of learning that they want to do, but next year, we're asking them to make it technology-based. And one of the programs that we're using is the Digital Badge Program. If you're not familiar with that, a lot of digital software companies and web-based companies provide teacher training online through the, through the internet. And the idea is that teachers become certified in one specialty. So for example, you can see there, a lot of our teachers now are Google-certified, so they went through, you know, rigorous training, and then they got this certification. There's different levels for that. So we'd like our teachers to pick areas and software that are meaningful to them so that they can apply that in the classroom for next year. So we're really excited that next year, we continue that focus on technology and hopefully take it to the next level with the one-to-one program. We continue to be focused on 21st-century learning. One of the areas we've proven, I think, that we really need to take a look at the high school is our assessments and how we assess students. I can share with you, my, my youngest daughter is a sophomore in Boston at Suffolk University. She's in their business program. And she came home excited because one of the things that she had to do as part of her marketing classes, they invited George Foreman, the boxer, the former boxer, into their class. And each, the, the idea was they had to create a business from scratch and pitch it to George Foreman, and he took the business plan of the winning team, and he's actually building a boxing facility in Boston utilizing that. I can tell you that more and more, we're hearing stories like that from our, our students coming, you know, either in college or coming out of colleges, is those real-world applications, performance-based assessments. Those are really truly not only going to help them with their studies at school, but also that's what employers are looking for. They're looking for students who can think on their feet, who can collaborate together. I think the days of rote memory, hundred-question multiple-choice questions still have a value, but we need to embed more of that practice and rigor into our, our assessments. So we really are looking to make our assessments more ongoing and timely, but also allowing our students to get real, meaningful feedback, providing our students reflection time to, not only from the teacher, but also from their peers. So we're hoping to see that the assessment piece kind of models the 21st-century instruction that we're seeing in our classrooms for next year. And if you look at that, that, that little balance I just showed you there, that really shows you how in, if you're doing assessments right, there should be a nice balance of the lower-level Bloom taxonomy, which are things like recall, identification, but also can you use it? It's one thing to, to learn something, but to be able to apply it, that's the highest level of learning, and that's what we're after at the high school. One of the things I also wanted to point out is we continue to focus on social-emotional learning. As Mr. Marhefka pointed out, we're hoping to employ a social-emotional teacher, hopefully in the near future. We've also, we've already started to get the room ready for this person, trying to maximize mindfulness as, as well as growth mindset, flexible seating. One of the things that we've asked our teachers to do is, this past summer, we gave them four books that kind of focus on social-emotional learning, and these are all books that, that I've read and, and our, our team has read. One book on growth mindset. The other book is In Search of Deeper Learning, so it's getting into that authentic kind of real-world applications. Culturey Responsive Teaching in the Brain, and then Hacking School Discipline, which is a focus on restorative practices. So we asked our teachers to pick a book. We purchased a book for our teachers, and the goal is to, next year, create book studies throughout the school day, during professional day, so they can kind of unpack these books together as a team. One of the things I wanted to share, too, the impact I think social-emotional is having at East Long Metal High School this year in our Intensive Needs Program, kind of happened accidentally. One of the teachers from the Intensive Needs Program was going by Mr. Kiernan's drum circle and just became such a beautiful partnership between that program and what Mr. Kiernan does, utilizing technology. So they use things like Sound Beam. And I think, Joanne, it's kind of cold. I don't know if you want to talk about what they're doing this summer?
Well, Mr. Kiernan approached me and asked if, if, if there would be a spot for him working this summer with the students in the classroom who have intensive special needs, because he, it has so, it has so changed him in terms of the way he sees these students and in terms of the way that he can bring his expertise to really make things better for them. So the two teachers will be working together this summer. There's going to be a lot of hands-on learning. There's going to be a lot of very sensory learning, and he has just embraced that classroom. Those are students with significant and profound special needs. And to walk by and to see them in the middle of the drum circle with all the thirty-two high school students around them, they did a presentation to the high school band with their music therapist. And one of the nicest things that came out of that was the high school students saying to the gentleman who does a little music therapy, "You get paid to do that? Like, you do that?" Like, you know, he's got a guitar. You know, they have a great time. But to see the two very diverse groups of students coming together in, in, in such a nice way is really wonderful. One of the things in Gina's kind of garden space this year is that another staff person built for the Intensive Special Needs Class, a raised bed garden, and it's built so that the students can get the wheelchairs right underneath and so that they can, you know, kind of really get in the dirt and, you know, do that sort of thing. So there's going to be a lot of hands-on opportunities for them this year as well. So the only caveat to that is that the first tomato sandwich is mine. Other than that, it's, it's really been a great, a wonderful collaboration. Never in a million years did I think, you know, that, that it would prove so powerful in so many different ways.
And I think it's hard to quantify, quantify the social-emotional results of that, but I would say, if you guys can jump in, more than ever this year, our kids are much more aware of the power of positive thinking and the power of relationships. So for example, you know, when we started this Zen Garden, at first it was kind of hokey and kids were going Zen, you know, and they were making fun of it, but now they, they gravitate to it. They eat in that space. Our social-emotional room that we're building, the kids are, like, they come by and, as we were kind of putting it together, and they're like, "Wow, this is a really neat space. I could see myself coming and decompressing here." And the whole idea that we hope from that room is, throughout the school day, we have too many kids that, for whatever reason, need to step out, can't handle what's going on in the classroom, had a bad night, you know, so many different things going on. And so what happens is we get an overload in my office. We get it in, in guidance. And what we're, we're trying to do with this new space is have someone in there that can decompress with them in a professional manner and give them actual strategies to go back to the class. That is the goal, is to, to, you know, feel it and flush it, as I always say. Just get it all out, but then go back to the classroom and be productive. So it's something that I think is overlooked in a lot of high schools, and we really want to give that a try for next year, but I think our kids are, are in need of it. As you saw earlier, the twenty-three percent that, for whatever reason, things aren't working so well for them, we want to touch those students, as well as our everyday students, because I think everybody can benefit from these types of exercises and activities.
All right, moving fully around the circle here. Our goal that deals with continuous learning and achievement, and this is a goal, obviously, that also picks up on how we continue to align as standards change. We're doing the work to make sure that our curriculum is changing and aligning to those standards.
Just a quick thought. I'm not asking a question, but I'm, I'm looking, and we had the whole child presentation. Instructional practice presentation, no, academic performance presentation, so to speak. So I know that we have high statistics on the whole child. We saw that. And we're going to have high statistics on active performance, especially in the fall.
Right. We have something in this presentation, too.
Exactly. But how, how, there's no high statistics on instructional practice. I don't, I know there's no answer, but how do we measure that that's actually getting better and better in each school? That's a question for them for the, for the future.
Okay.
I don't know if, can you measure it? I don't know.
I have written that down too rich. I have something to think about, like, how do we either catalog what types of experiences we're seeing, and then how are we maybe, are we noticing those in administrator evaluations of educators in time? Like, is what we're providing professional development on hitting the classroom?
Right.
And then is it hitting the classroom in a way that's making an impact to the achievement?
Good question. I think certainly it's something that we'll have to discuss next week, but I think in observations and evaluations, you know, those discussions are happening between evaluator and individual teacher. But probably more importantly is when, I'll steal an idea that Mountain View does, is when the individual classroom teacher has a chance to share with many of his or her colleagues, you know, in about a half hour. It's something you do, I think, on your faculty meeting. And provides how it's impacted his or her classroom, and then if there's a way to measure how many of them go try that.
It's like our instructional technology specialists. I mean, we've been cataloging, you know, what teachers are coming in and what they're using that for. So I think that's one way we can quantify the instructional practice piece.
So we'll, we'll work on that. Okay. So from the district focus or district level, can you go to the next slide? We were working on how do we continue to look at this and support our teachers across the district, and more specifically in this case, providing professional development to our department head, which Mrs. Brown put together for this spring. I don't know if you want to walk through.
So, yeah, and I'll jump down to the other two bullets, too. We're switching our assessment software from STAR to iReady for a, a number of reasons. We piloted it at several schools, and it's, it's been well-received for a number of reasons. One of which is that the information is much more easy to access about student achievement. So we're really asking teachers to differentiate instruction and figure out where kids have gaps. They can immediately find that out, whereas with STAR, it was clunky. Same thing with our Mastery Connect, where we really wanted to use that more for formative assessments, but it, we ended up kind of creating these longer assessments, and so by the time we looked at the information, it was kind of almost not too late to really do anything about it, but it was not immediate. So how do we, we wanted to provide, and iReady has this as well, ways of measuring standard achievement mastery so that we can go back and do the re-teaching. And then finally, for, iReady also comes with some online instruction that's matched to where the kids are at, so we can really personalize some learning. So the whole idea is how do we look, how do we create assessments or use assessments more frequently, more formatively, so that we can make sure all students are achieving and getting what they need? And so because the department heads often run meetings where they're looking at student information, I wanted to help give them the tools that they're going to need to continue this work. And so one of the main things of that PD was that it's not about these tools. It's not about the assessment. It's just about what we do with that information and getting them to understand that, you know, when we look at student information together, we get so much more out of it than if we're looking at it individually. Not just sharing best practices, but just seeing things that we might not see. So we, we, they saw, they learned some protocols. They learned about creating collaborative culture. We learned about, about better facilitation, and so that went over really well. I had, had to offer it on two separate days because it was voluntary, and I had almost all of the department heads, plus a lot of interested teachers, attend. And again, a BEPAP. So it was just a way to kind of get that message across that this assessment really is about trying to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students and, and helping each other to meet those needs as not like we are in it alone, that's your student. No, these are all of our students. So that was what that PD day was about. And then, you know, in addition, the coaches continued that work, and the coaches were at that PD day because I wanted, in a lot of ways, they're seen as instructional leaders, but I want the department heads to also kind of see themselves as, as instructional leaders as well when they're running these meetings and, and looking at this information. But the coaches continue to do what they always do with AVMR assessments. They're, well, not K to three, but eventually, we're going to have K to, sorry, K to five teachers trained. But the math coaches, the math coach, the three-to-five math coach helped with the K to two math coach and, and helping the teachers to give the assessments, look at the assessment data, figure out what to do with it. Same with ST Math. And so this whole push has really been about, you know, how do we make sure all learners are getting what they need in tier one in that, in that classroom? And then, of course, PD is always going to be about supporting standard-based instruction. It's just with all these innovation, innovative ideas embedded. So that was just a collaborative day PD, and one of the slides, it's hard to see, but it says, "Please rate yourself on how comfortable you feel now about learning, about building, sustaining, improving your team's collaborative culture." And as you can see, most of them are at the fours and fives, so it was well-received. And STAR group.
So this is, if you remember, we were able to give you a look at a growth percentile with students who are participating in schools and grade levels who are participating in STAR back at the mid-cycle. We're bringing this back now at the end of the year. One caveat is Maple Shade and Mountain View, you have a smaller sampling size that maybe took, continue to take STAR. took, continue to take STAR through the end of the year, because when Maple Shade and Mountain View hit the MCAS assessment, we don't also then schedule every student through STAR as we've done with Meadow Brook and Berchland. Our goal is to hopefully have, this is aggregate, so you're looking at the schools, all the grade levels that participate, is to keep that growth percentile in the 40 or 60 range, which gives you the average to above average, and if you can get above, as you see Meadow Brook did there with reading, that's really impressive through a whole school year. So that's STAR reading. Then if you go to the next slide, STAR math, you see that we're also in the 40th to 60th percentile. So we're excited about that, and we're hoping that iReady can give us even quicker-hitting looks at this while also giving us the look at the year at this time next year. Moving to elementary schools, I think Mrs. Antonell is picking up.
Yes, so we're going to start with Meadow Brook. But as a preface, I'd just like to say that Meadow Brook and Maple Shade focused a lot of their data on AVMR, but all three schools are doing it. I focused on iReady because we did the pilot. So AVMR is being used at all three schools. At Meadow Brook, the kindergarten teacher, special education teachers, Title I math teacher, and three second grade teachers were all trained in AVMR Course 1. By the end of next year, we hope that all of the remaining grade level teachers will have completed the Course 1 training. So the whole school will be trained by that point. This training is changing the way the staff thinks about student numeracy learning based on individual student learning. AVMR is a series of professional development courses that improve teacher effectiveness by increasing the content and pedagogical understanding of teachers. Diagnosing individual current student understanding and applying knowledge of developmental learning progression leads to student growth. The first graph illustrates the end-of-year administration of number words and numerals and structure. The data reflects the beginning of our journey with both AVMR and our shifts in math education. We are getting stronger with forward number and backward number sequence and number identification. The data also suggests that the area of structure of numbers is still an area for continued growth. The second graph demonstrates the growth that was achieved with a group of students identified as needing additional intervention in the area of forward number and backward number sequence, as well as number identification. The kindergarten team thought outside the box and utilized two high school student volunteers to work with small groups of students in their classrooms daily for six weeks. The STAR graph at the bottom illustrates growth in math throughout the year. In the fall, 66% of students scored at or above benchmark, and in the spring, 86 were at, at or above benchmark. Most notably, you can see how the percentage of students below benchmark has shifted over time. In the fall, 4% of second graders or seven students fell in the urgent intervention range, but shifted to 1% or only two students in the spring. Similarly, 16% 27 students were in the intervention range in the fall, and that improved only 5% or nine students in the spring. So on to Maple Shade. Maple Shade is also focused on the AVMR on this slide, which stands for Advantage Math Recovery, by the way. The first group of teachers trained collaboratively, planned and aligned practices in the schools to assess the students, plan instruction, group students, and instruct students in the structure of numbers addition and subtraction. This chart shows students from three different classrooms whose teachers were trained in this instructional approach. The goal is that all students should be at Level 5. The staff identified 32 students in the school in grades three and four that needed this learning gap in mathematics to improve. Among these 32 students, assessments ranged from as low as zero to four. Every student at Level 4 ended the year by meeting the Level 5 expectation. Many students at Level 3 met the Level 5 expectation. Most of the Level 2 students ended the year at Level 4. All but one of the Level 1 students ended the year at Levels 3, 4, or 5. Lastly, the two Level 0 students ended the year at Levels 1 and 3. In addition to this and other achievement data, Maple Shade also wanted to share some very positive results from the family, student, and teacher surveys. The highlight from the parents was that 98% of the parents feel that communication with the principal is effective and timely, and 100% feel that the staff is courteous and professional. 97% of the students feel that the school has rules against harming others. And lastly, 100% of the teachers either agree or strongly agree that they are trusted to make sound professional decisions about instruction. All survey data is available upon request and has already been shared with the parents and teachers. Lastly, Mountain View, I have some pictures up here of iReady data, and this data is what we used mainly instead of STAR this year. So iReady is an online assessment that provides flexible assessments designed to measure specific grade level standards as they are covered in the classroom. iReady can be given based on our scope and sequence and allows teachers to quickly identify when reteaching or remediation is needed as the standards are covered across the year. The students take one diagnostic test at the beginning of the year. It is longer than STAR, but the teachers did say it provided better information. And it's adaptive, so as the students are taking the tests, it adapts to how they are performing on individual questions. So if a question, they are able to answer it quickly and easily, the test will give them a harder question. If the student struggles with questions, it'll drop them to an easier type question, and it pinpoints their actual ability level. It charts a personalized learning path for each student as they answer the questions. After the initial diagnostic test, subsequent assessments target specific standards and consist of only five questions, intended to be quick formative assessments. These assessments are built to match the rigor of state tests and let teachers know which skills their students have or have not mastered, so they can adjust instruction. So this screenshot is an example of one report type that we can get from iReady. There are many. I chose these because they didn't show any student information, personal information. The top one shows the results of what students knew about these geometry standards before instruction, and the bottom one shows what they learned after. Although the students weren't where we would want them to be yet, in the second slide, there is growth. A more detailed report would be available to the teachers to show them the individual student information that lets them know how to reteach and reach proficiency before moving on to the next standard. So if you look at the top, the top one, only six of the students were considered progressing on these standards when they first took the test. And then by the time they took it after instruction, 14 were progressing towards, I'm sorry, I can't see the slide. My age, progressing in six, I can't read what's, beginning.
Beginning.
Beginning, thank you. So you see the numbers swapped from the first time it was given to the second time. So not pictured on the slide, I just wanted to give you some information about our intervention programs also. In tier two reading interventions provided by our reading interventionists, students this year averaged growth of four reading levels on the benchmark assessment. Tier three students who were provided with one-to-one tutoring made amazing growth. One third grade student already surpassed an IEP goal that he was supposed to meet in January of 2020. One fourth grader grew nine levels on the benchmark, which is astounding. Another fourth grader went up five levels, and two of our fifth graders are already reading at levels typical for sixth graders. In math, a total of 11 third graders received interventions. Three of the students brought their STAR scaled score up 100 points, which is typical growth over the course of a year. Seven of the students grew by 150 to 175 points. One student only grew about 75 points, so this is someone that we're going to continue to monitor when we get back to school in the fall. Four students, in grade four, four students all grew at least 125 scaled score points, and four students in grade five, all of them raised their scaled score over 100 points for the year. So I prefer scaled score over percentile, just because it shows the individual students' actual growth, and that's why I use those scales.
Okay, so at Berchland's, we definitely had lower growth than we wanted this year on STAR. Probably a lot goes into that, of course. One is that we really crammed in the third STAR amidst a million other things going on. But when you break it down a little bit more, you can see that in both reading and math, our seventh and eighth grade had the kind of growth that we look for, around 50 to 56 or 49 to 56 in both reading and math. And when you, you know, Mr. Futcher, you also used to always have a cohort model, like, our lower scores were in the same grade for both reading and math. So those students are new to me and new to us, so I don't know yet what that means. But just to point out that we saw the same, the cohorts were very consistent. Now, if you look at the STAR growth in tier two for reading, so these are the students that have the core plus more with our tier two for at least two marking periods, you can see it's all over. Our eighth, we made big changes to our tier two reading this year. In eighth grade, it really worked, you know, a growth of 71% for the students who were in tier two. In sixth grade, it was flat lines, and in seventh, it was right there in the middle. Then we added tier three reading this year, which was one of our best moments of evolution as a school this year. That came teachers up to me, and they built it, and I okayed it. And you can see in seventh and eighth grade, especially tier three reading, really had a large impact on student learning. And then in tier two for math, sixth grade, you can see that's what we look for, frankly, is the 10% higher growth if you take tier two math. And in seventh and eighth, the students did not lead to a higher growth percentage. But who knows what their growth would have looked like if they didn't have extra math. We are thrilled about iReady coming. I think it is going to make a big difference, and it's going to drive instruction more than STAR does. I would say for a large percentage of my core math and English teachers, like STAR is a here it comes, there it goes, and we're going to make sure iReady is not that way. Now, that said, we have to make sure that we remember the middle school learner as well. My daughters go to Springfield Public Schools, they've been doing iReady for a long time now. My sixth grade daughter is a high flyer, and she's like, "Dad, I can't believe you're making your whole school do iReady." You know, because like she's bored by it. So like, it's not bored by the content, just like whatever you keep doing gets less interesting. So I think it's going to be a very good thing, but we're going to have to remember the young adolescent mind in that figuring out what fits where. The blue is what you've always asked me to show you, which is how many kids are in each of the tiered classes and what percentage of them test out at some point by grade. What we really need to fix is that sixth grade math, only 21 students got it. That's because, no fault of anybody's, but like, everybody, including parents, as they come up, want to focus on reading. So we have all these kids sitting in tier two reading for four marking periods that need tier two math. But, you know, the language, and they'll never be good at math if they can't understand the problem, I get the thinking, but I got to do something to change that mentality, because we should not have 50% more kids taking tiered reading in sixth grade than tiered math, and clearly our numbers denote that. So some cultural work I have to do with families as well. But you can see a lot of kids got out. And then, much like everyone else here, it's just been a big transition year. We started a new science curriculum, we implemented readers theater, we continue, we're, I think, in year three of ST Math, existing in some way, shape, or form when our school iReady came in, A to Z writing. We went to Wilson Reading for our tier three. I now have three teachers trained in that, it's a two full-day training. And we started using the Woodcock Johnson Assessment, which was done individually to start to get more accurate reading data on individual readers, especially for IEP goals. So a lot of movement, definitely ready for iReady, definitely ready to start piloting some new math curriculum. So a lot of excitement. But I'm a little thrown off by the lower growth scores and for sure are interested. I think this is our second year of Next Generation MCAS, so I feel that version, we had cracked Park, like, we had really high growth every year, we moved up to Level 1, we were like thrilled, and some of my teachers were like, "We are not buying this Park thing." And so then we moved over to Next Generation MCAS. I'm not sure we've cracked that code yet. So we definitely have some work to do, but we're happy and exciting and excited and willing to do it.
I think they're still practicing making that test, so I don't find it necessarily a reflection on any of you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, they don't even know what they're doing, so. You want it to be good, you want it to succeed at the same time, yeah.
They sent out like, "Your preliminary data will be available." So like, we went in to like check it that day, and then they're like, "No, it'll be available a week later." And I was like, "Oh, my God." So maybe they are still practicing, but we got to, we got to keep pivoting to make sure we're matching what they're requiring on, so.
Okay, in high school.
Okay, so I'm going to speak a little bit about the achievement of what we had this year for the high school. And I do want to say, we did take a little bit of a different approach when we put together this slide. We do have Albert IO at the high school, where a lot of our AP classes have been utilizing that program to, you know, to enhance instruction. They're also using that in some of our general education classes as well. Our special ed classes do utilize STAR to, you know, assess the students throughout the course of the year and see growth in terms of math and reading for special education students. We still do give the DBAs three times a year to, you know, give those assessments and check where the kids are at. But we thought it'd be, you know, it being June, a good opportunity to highlight the end result of what we see from those elementary schools through the middle schools all the way through the high school, talk about what our graduating seniors did this year. So if we're just going to talk about GPA, we thought it was actually really cool that 45% of our seniors achieved a 3.0 or better throughout the course of their four years at the high school on our way to GPA scale. So we're talking, you know, if you're translating that in, it's about a B or better average throughout the course of their four years. If you're looking at AP and honor classes, just this year alone, 77% of our seniors took an advanced placement or an honors course this year. So that's not over the course of their four years, but just as seniors, they took an AP or honors level course, so you're talking four out of five kids. If you're looking at kids going onto a four-year school, we had 60% of our seniors commit to a four-year college or university. And if you fact, if you include the two-year route as well, where the students are either going to a two- or four-year school, we have 89% of our kids going onto a two- or four-year college. With that, we also have 3.3% of our students going onto the military, and 3.3% of our students either going onto a trade or a career path as well. So we're looking at 96% of our students who have a chosen or identified path when they leave us this year. You know, so we just thought it was a great opportunity to celebrate, both, obviously you have the snapshot of the kids at graduation, but I thought this was a great snapshot of our senior class, and just to hit on some of the schools you see up there, we have kids going to BC, we have kids going to Tufts, Georgia Tech for Engineering, and we even have a student going to Yale, and the United States Air Force Academy as well, which is a very prestigious institution.
So just a couple of key takeaways, I know that we've been talking almost for two hours, so we'll go quickly. You know, what we're seeing as you look through all these slides, that students at all grade levels are demonstrating learning and achievement in a variety of ways. That's something that we're really looking to emphasize and continue as we move into next year. Therefore, our staff members are providing different opportunities to show and allow our students to learn and grow, which is really what is at the heart of all this. Our aggregate growth in STAR has stayed in that 40th, 60th percentile, so that's, that was good to see. As we shift to iReady, we're going to see if we can get information faster as well as at the end of the year. The interventions that were just being presented are showing positive results, and we have to continue to make sure that we're matching students with the right intervention. And then our social emotional learning initiatives throughout the district have shown this year and last year really, some really positive results. Thoughts, questions?
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.
Thank you.
You can jot down, you can give us five more minutes?
Yeah.
Also, board the budget for five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, moving along here, for old business, six-point-one Berchtlins Park Handbook Revisions for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Dr. Allen is here, just to update us on what we tabled at our last meeting. Dr. Allen, we have a memo from you mentioning page two, three, and four, so you can take us through each bullet real quickly?
Uh, yeah, so, thanks for the feedback, and definitely improved my thinking. Did I send you the handbook with the revised, or did I just send you the memo? So, on page two, you can see I much, I added detail to the award system in terms, in relation, it's obviously easy for the A to B to C D classes, but in terms of the standards-based grading in math. And probably more importantly than that is to go to page six, where underneath grading, I added a description of how that works. So, that I hadn't done, and I think that'll provide some clarity for the parents that are looking for it.
Okay.
So, now, the tough part with standards-based is how you do honors, right? Like, so, the decisions that I'm proposing are to get high honors, an A in all subjects. Students need to get a three-point-oh on all math standards. Some would say, why shouldn't they have to get a four-point-oh? Well, four-point-oh is functioning above grade level, right? So, like, our past expectations. So, I would argue, in this moment, we're trying to fit standards-based into the other metric, and the kids that are mastering all the grade level standards are currently are getting As. So, that's why I think a three-point-oh is, it should suffice, it shouldn't need to be a four-point-oh. That's for high honors. For honors, I'm proposing a two-point-five or higher on all math standards, because even with a two-point-five, like, they're getting very close, and I don't, I want, I want standards-based grading to work without teachers being afraid of honor roll, right? So, like, if a, if a kid is truly two-point-five, like, almost there, I don't want teachers to give a three-point-oh because they're afraid of the backlash of the honor roll thing. So, I think two-point-five is gonna, if we get this right, demonstrate being very close, and therefore, that's why I put that there. Now, as far as the math habits of work for high honors, I certainly said a three. Remember, that's a different scale, like, a three is like always, a two is usually. So, I said for high honors, it's gotta get three on both of them. For honors, I put in this proposition that you could get a two on one of them and a three on the other for an average of two-point-five. Certainly open to your thoughts on, for sure, on this. It's not a perfect system, and I've definitely complicated it. But, you definitely pushed my thinking and made me realize I needed much more clarity. All right, so I'll go to the second bullet point.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, yeah, absolutely.
So, one question that we had brought up the last time was, it is more just clarification, because we don't wanna assume. So, will all sixth grade teachers be providing the same standards at the same time?
Yes.
So, that will be, that standardization protocol will be uniform across all sixth grade classrooms, seventh grade classrooms?
Yes.
And eighth grade?
Yeah. And so, I, I should've said that, and we also put in here that the NAs do not apply, because.
If they haven't gotten to that standard.
If they haven't gotten to that, then it's a success. If they haven't gotten, or if we haven't fully circled back, yeah.
And then, one question I had, what, based on the revisions, was, I noticed it said sixth grade, seventh grade, and then pre-algebra. Are we, where are we covering like, the eighth grade specific standards?
So, in eighth grade, students take either pre-algebra or algebra, and.
How are we weaving in the actual eighth grade content? Since those are just.
Yeah, I mean, pre-algebra itself in both seventh and eighth is a weird class, because it's something that's always existed, and, so even in seventh, where we teach pre-algebra, the teachers dedicate a large portion of the year to the seventh grade standards, and these are students that generally can go fast. So, then they do the seventh grade standards, and then they do the pre-algebra standards in seventh grade. And so, I would say in eighth grade, it's the same exact thing. It's like, pre-algebra is called pre-algebra, because it always has been, and it's a combination of the eighth grade standards and the pre-algebra standards.
Okay. All right.
Which frankly, that was, I mean, I'm at my fourth or fifth middle school, and that's a, that's been a conundrum everywhere I've gone. But, no school I've ever been a part of has like, dropped that pre-algebra name, right? So, in seventh grade, we say pre-algebra, we mean it, but for the first two-thirds of the year, we mean seventh grade math fast, followed by pre-algebra standards.
And that's probably more of a cultural, from a family standpoint, and probably throughout, in terms of dropping the name. If we drop the name, people then feel that we've dropped the status.
Yeah, and I guess the reason I gave that example is it's not just we, it's like.
Yeah, it's across the.
It's everywhere, yeah.
Yeah, I would just be, I mean, this is a conversation for another time, but just cautious of naming something, something other than what it really is, if we're talking about seventh grade standards that are in alignment with what the state has deemed seventh grade standards or eighth grade standards in that moment, and then calling it something that might only be representative of a quarter of the year's instruction.
I'm all in on that change.
Yeah, and then just thinking specifically about some of the language that's in the framework now, and what the state is recommending in terms of middle school pathways leading to that, and high school.
Shouldn't the state like, understand this problem, like, at this point, and have adjusted MCAS accordingly, or?
Yeah, but the state is, in the framework, there's a good amount of information about middle school math pathways, and the state has moved to call out a little bit more directly the need for eighth grade math standards to be taught explicitly, as opposed to pushing pre-algebra into the middle schools, and actually charting a course for students mathematically that looks a little different at the high schools, but.
It's interesting, because wasn't it a few years ago, they were trying to push the algebra into the middle schools?
They wanted you to overload algebra, yeah. When I got there, more kids were taking algebra in eighth grade when I arrived than now, because we, we were like, for the exact same reason, we're like, we're just putting these kids in algebra to say we put them in algebra. Like, they're all retaking it at the high school.
And then you're.
So, we went from a hundred and twenty kids taking algebra my first year, to now we're down, often to sixty or seventy.
And just to think about that transition too, in terms of what the state assessment is doing, tenth grade is now tenth grade standards, as opposed to that integration of eighth grade math standards, so.
But, I think somebody also meant, somebody just mentioned here, you're dealing with cultural, the cultural aspect of, what do you mean you're not teaching pre-algebra anymore? Because that's the way it's always been. So, I think the standards are there, now we've gotta change the culture, and it'll, it'll flow.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a work in progress.
Not having talked to anybody at my school, I'm a hundred percent in on that change, and my teachers would be too, but.
No, that's my, it just caught my attention when I saw the absence of eighth grade standards, that's all.
Tell us about recess, Dr. Allen.
So, recess, page three. You know, basically, I'm a big believer in recess, we've just never cracked the code. And if you remember, when I got to Berchtlins, the classes were forty to forty-two minutes long, so the first thing we did was change the whole schedule to get up to fifty-two-minute classes. So, but now, now to schedule recess, you have to pull off class time, and I don't wanna go below the fifty, I just, you need fifty, in my opinion. So, I'm not ready to say I want recess in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We do want recess in sixth, we want it to at least be an option. So, worked with Mr. Frudet, the world's biggest believer in recess, and he's all in on donating the back half of his field. So, basically, we're asking to, it'll be five to ten minutes, you know, we will, we will speed up the, the getting of food in sixth grade. I don't know how we'll deal necessi, like rainy days, we're not doing it, you know? So, it's really gonna be a feel-it-out. We're also gonna give kids the choice. If you can picture at sixth grade lunch, I have anywhere from four to seven adults in there, you know? I will be at every one of these as we learn this. And basically, it'd be like, all right, there's eight minutes left in lunch, if you're going to recess, bring your stuff up and line up here, and follow this route. And so, two or three, depending on how many line up, we would just divvy up the teachers that same way, so. We went, my sixth grade counselor and I went to my wife's school, Glenbrook, and just sort of observed their sixth grade recess. You know, and just, just what you would think, it's good, they're getting energy out. So, depending on how fast cleanup of lunches and everything, it'd just be five to ten minutes, and it'd be weather-dependent. And I did put in here, it's, it's a privilege, not a right, so. We're always trying to, I hate to say, but we're always trying to find like, creative ways to inspire kids on the cusp to like, keep it together, and I think recess would've helped in sixth grade this year, for sure, like, keep your recess privilege kind of thing, so.
Even walking around the front, where like, the baseball field is, or the softball, you know?
Yeah, but it's a time.
If it's snowy out, and it's not loud.
My concern is the time, is the time.
Yeah, so that's partly why we chose Maple Shade, two reasons we chose Maple Shade. One, there could be seventy-five kids getting PE instruction on our side of the building. So, to add sixth graders, it's tough.
I think it just sounds great.
But, to go out that door, if you picture Maple Shade, we're really close to that door. So, we can line up, get out there, and it'll take one minute to get out there, it'll take one minute to get back in, so it does optimize the time. But, I'm trying to be honest here, like, I've seen it happen at other schools, I think it's important, but we're gonna have to learn as we go. Like, someone said, well, you're gonna let them bring balls and all these things? And I'm like, well, I, yeah, yeah, until they prove that that was a bad idea. A lot of, like, you know, I, I, I go back to, because I went there, but at my wife's school, like, you, you do up the nurse, the nurse visits with a recess, like, oh, Mr. Fruchero got hurt again at recess, he got on a nurse before he goes back to English, you know? So, we'll be feeling that out as we go, but, and like, Mr. Fruchero, I think you're the one who mentioned, but I had a fifth grade student send me a letter, I haven't responded yet, I've had the letter for four months, because I'm, this, this letter was so good about why they should get recess in sixth grade, that I'm like, I'm not writing back until I've figured this out fully. So, that is that proposal.
Are you gonna get, are you anticipating any books back from seventh and eighth graders? Because, hey, what about us?
Um, yeah, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, eighth graders are already mad that sixth grade always gets first lunch, and I'm just like, eighth grade, you're just older, you're just gonna eat later, I'm sorry, like. So, so the answer would be yes, and my answer would be maybe someday. But, they, I think that frankly, if I gave eighth graders recess, ninety-five percent of them would just go out there and sit down. So.
But, you know.
But, seventh is really in the middle.
I know.
Mr. Fonsika, yeah, seventh grade could be upset with me.
I'm aware of that. I mean, I'll be honest, I've got some concerns about it, but I'm not gonna say don't try.
Yeah, and that's partly why we're trying in one grade also, you know, because it's gonna be very depend, I'm gonna be a big part of this. And I'm at most, I'm at eighty percent of lunches all year, but now I need to be at a hundred percent of sixth grade lunches. So, I need to try it in one grade before I see how it works with all three. But, I would love to give it to all three. And there's always been talk of maybe letting the eighth graders go into our courtyard. Problem is, our courtyard abuts seventh grade learning rooms, so it's like, where's the balance there? And you, you've all seen in the last six years how much more open my school has become with tables in the hallway, and just, there's a lot more going on, so they're open to these things. But, you also can't have a hundred and fifty eighth graders screaming outside your window while you're trying to teach seventh grade math, so it's always a balance. And then, the last bullet, I, I've just withdrawn the name change for the library. I hadn't taken into consideration name changes, and I respect that that's a big deal. And while the focus of the library has shifted in a positive way, and while it's become way more multifaceted than what it is, and, and mind you, let me also say, our circulation of books went extremely up this year. So, it's not that library has died, actually, we checked out more books than ever. It's just that there's a lot more going on in there than just the library, and it has, you know, has and will continue to become sort of a hub of our diversity focus. But anyways, all that is just said to say, let's call it the library, it's a good name.
Yeah.
Dr. Allen, do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the changes to the Berchtlins Parkman School Handbook for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year.
Any motion of a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
opposed, we unanimous, thank you very much, Dr. Allen.
Do you have a letter right now?
The letter.
Preservative.
Yeah, I gotta write that kid back, it's on my summer to-do list table.
There you go.
Absolutely.
Okay, six-point-two.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Six-point-two budget update, as we've talked during this meeting, we have secured a one-to-one for the two through twelve grades. We have secured an SEL teacher at Meadowbrook, and tonight, I think we'd like to secure a teacher at the high school, SEL teacher at the high school.
So, do I have a motion, please?
I move, I move that we hire an SEL teacher at the high school, keeping the number of FTEs the same as it currently is, and provided we can work with it, get it within our budget.
Do I have a motion of a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? I'll ask Mr. Smith, with this vote, does that mean the high school can post a position tomorrow?
They can.
Thank you.
Yay!
So, all those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed, we unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, okay.
Superintendent's evaluation, okay, Mr. Smith, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
If you take out, you have, you're on the screen, okay, so on page one, we start with the student learning goal. What I'm going to do is cite the number of commendations, and then focus on one or two. So, on the student learning goal on page two, I can see that there's five commendations. I do want to commend the superintendent on his partnering with the E.L.P.S. newest leader on Preventive Needs Assessment Survey, and also in that, continue to keep those budgets and funds expanding for social-emotional programs. So, that's the student learning goal, it's achieved. Moving on to professional practice goal, that also was achieved, that's page four, you can follow along with me. You can see there are four recommendations at the bottom, few, two to four commendations, reading two of them, commend the superintendent closely with the DPW superintendent and the TBW facilities manager, not only on building maintenance, but also on capital projects, and also that he works closely with all the different departments, IT Director, E.L. Public Library, Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Open Space Community, Town Emergency Planning, and that goal is also achieved. Going now to the actual standards, the first is instructional leadership, he receives an exemplary, in that case, there are five citations at the end of it. I do wanna promote the second citation, which is working with the leadership team to promote instruction to more student-centered, problem-serving lessons, and that's something that goes back to what we discussed earlier, however measured it, it's actually happening. Next standard is management and operations, where Mr. Smith receives a proficient. There were seven citations here, the top would finalize the budget process, secure level funding, one new position in the one-to-one program, being able to negotiate four unit contracts and seven individual contracts, and once again, submitting the statement of interest to the MSBA core program. The next standard, community engagement should be just exemplary. If you turn the page, you'll see there are six citations here. The first is Mr. Smith organized and hosted an open forum on the new high school project for our parents, citizens, local, and regional politicians, that he's very visible in attending district and town events, that he worked closely with the school committee, SNLS's office to host a meeting, and tour with the MSBA officials, and to continue to develop that E.L.P.S. Diversity and Equity Committee. In the final standard, professional culture, you'll see five citations. I wanna just focus on the second, that Mr. Smith worked with SNLS's office to host a meeting with area superintendents, school committee members, and union presidents on the promise bill. So, we have two, and so, continuing to the very last page, a summary statement, to summarize the superintendent's achieved goals of both the student learning goal, professional practice goal, in addition, the superintendent's attained exemplary, instructional leadership, and family and community engagement standards, while attaining proficient in the management operations and professional culture standards. That is the superintendent's evaluation for the twenty, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Thank you very much.
You did okay.
I'd say it's a team effort, there's no way we could do any of this without the leadership team was just here and went off without all of you, so I thank you for your support and really, your help.
Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, we unanimous. Seven-point-one awarding of the contract for the Meadowbrook Accelerative Peer Roof Project.
Okay, so in your packets, you've got a look at a memo from Margaret Wood, who is our owner project manager from Pink and Company, and it breaks down the different bid projections or bid packets, excuse me, that we received, and the one that not only was our lowest bidder, but also met the other criteria, was Titan Roofing Incorporated, and they're out of Springfield, and the base bid was one million one hundred and thirty-one thousand, and that would allow us to, that base bid includes the, what they call a deduct alternate, in terms of picking in terms of picking up the kindergarten roof, which now is fifteen years, going into its sixteen years. And a deduct alternate means just that, that if we were not to include the alternate, you would take a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars off the base bid.
So the base bid is that one-point-one-three-one...
Right. So that picks up the kindergarten roof.
Do I have a motion, please?
So the awarding of contracts to Titan Roof.
The special voucher has to abstain.
All right, I'll move to approve the contract for the Meadowbrook Accelerated Repair Roof Project to Titan Roofing Incorporated as presented this evening.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion?
I'm just gonna state, my husband works for Pink. Pink was chosen for us as a company, and he got placed in the Meadowbrook job, so I'm not gonna vote on anything.
And it was chosen by MSBA.
Yeah.
MSBA picked Pink as our owner-project manager.
I'm so delighted he'll be in town this summer.
Now you'll have time in your hands. You can leave.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All those abstaining?
Oh, I'm abstaining, sorry.
Thank you. We have a law, seven-point-two, to have a music department field trip, April sixteenth through April eighteenth.
Okay, so this is, I apologize, took me a moment to catch up to you. This is a memo coming from Ms. Flanagan, high school principal, similar to the music department field trip this year. They would like to go back to Philadelphia. This would take place starting on Thursday, April sixteenth, and they would be back on April eighteenth, 2020. The attached letter from Ms. Ford and Mr. Kiernan outlines what the trip will entail and also provides standards that they will be hitting as they go on this field trip.
So there was two days of school, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not vacation?
No. So are we gonna receive an update? Because there's not, there's no number of students, no number of chaperones, etc.
We can ask for an update next year as they start getting started.
Well, there is. What is here? There will be approximately eighty-one students and five chaperones, including a nurse.
I think that's based on...
Is that based on this year?
This year, yeah, so, yeah. We should probably get, get an update.
Yeah. And just because there will be days of school miss, are there any, like, provisions in there that just have to meet, like, a certain GPA?
Yes, so, not so much the GPA, but they have to be caught up in all their assignments. And there has to be a plan for making up the work they miss.
But not necessarily hitting a certain mark, like, if a kid is failing a course, they're still needed to go?
If they're actually failing, then they might not be eligible to go anyway.
Do I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the music department trip from Thursday, April sixteenth, 2020, to Saturday, April eighteenth, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We unanimous? Seven-point-three participation in July Fourth Parade. Have we been at the high school at nine?
I believe we, yeah, nine.
Well, steps off at ten.
Steps off at ten, so generally, we're starting to line up somewhere around nine-thirty. And then we, the parade starts promptly at ten, and we march from the high school to the middle school. So this is our participation. If the school committee is interested in participating, as we have done in the past, we'll send this in.
Yep, definitely.
Do you want to do a formal vote, or?
Move to approve participate, that we participate in the July Fourth Parade.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? We unanimous? MASC voting delegate for the joint conference on November eighth, 2019. In the past, it's been Mr. Fonseca. Mr. Fonseca, are you planning on attending?
I'll be there again.
Be there again?
Not exactly sure of my role yet, but I'll be there again.
Okay. Beth, you used to be the alternate, right?
Yeah.
It's always helpful to have an alternate, just in case, but, you know. It's Friday afternoon. It's Friday afternoon.
I'll put my name in there, that'll keep the status out of curiosity.
As an alternate?
Yeah.
It's actually, I know it's difficult because it takes time out of, like, a work week. It is, but they're very interesting to go to. And it's too, it is, it's difficult. Like, this last year, I couldn't go. It was killing me, I couldn't go. But I have always enjoyed them.
Working on, working on, working on the agenda now. Like I said, they're trying, and I haven't gotten an update, but it was mentioned that Doris Kearns Givens was a possibility of...
Oh, that's definitely going in.
It's a possibility, if she can reduce her rate, that they're gonna try and get her as a keynote. It's been discussed, so, I mean, I heard her, I think I was in San Antonio when I heard her. She's phenomenal. The history she's got is amazing, what she talks about.
So I have a motion for the official voting delegate and the alternate voting delegate.
I move to appoint Bill Fonseca as the official delegate and Rich Fruchero as the alternate delegate for the conference.
Do I have a, a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
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 And the last item, we have to reorganize, and we're looking at July first at eight AM. I'm seeing nods from everybody here. July first at eight AM. We don't have to vote on that.
No, we don't have to vote on that.
July first at eight AM. We'll post the meeting for eight AM.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent meeting. Don Mackey, as always. We loved your, your production, your producing. And it was a very good year, all of us, very good.
Yes, it was.
And so I think that's it. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
There you go.
Closeout the school year. All those in favor, please say yes.
That's it. That's it. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.